Okay, I have six thirty, so I am going to call the meeting of the Washoe County Planning Commission, Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty P M. to order. Do we have a determination of a quorum? Can we have roll call, please?
Larry Chesney?
Present.
Francine Doncic?
Present.
Thomas Bruce?
Present.
Sarah Sivilicik?
Here.
Kate Nelson?
Here.
Larry Payton? And I don't see him here yet, so I'll promote him if he comes on. And then, Pat Phillips?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, seeing we have a quorum, I would, I'll lead the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God. Thank you. Okay. See, legal counsel, could we have the ethics law announcement, please?
Certainly. The commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you have received a gift or loan. Number two, you have a pecuniary interest. Number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship. Or number four, you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered. You must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a regional person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the planning commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you, Jen. I'd like to note for the record that Commissioner Payton has just tuned in. So he is present. Secretary Lloyd, do we have the appeal procedure, please?
Sure. Most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the board of county commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within ten calendar days. From the date the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the secretary of the planning commission, and mailed to the original applicant whom the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at three two eight six one zero zero for information on the appeal procedure and application.
Thank you. Moving on to item five, do we have any public comment?
Seeing no hands raised for public comment.
Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to approval of the agenda of this evening's agenda. Do we have any discussion or emotion?
Sarah, Commissioner Doncic, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Nelson will second.
Okay, we got, we got a motion by Commissioner Doncic, a second by a tie, Commissioner Nelson and Commissioner Bruce. All those in favor approving the agenda, is there any discussion on it first? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, the agenda is approved. Moving to item seven, approval of the March second, twenty twenty-one draft minutes. Are there any comments or corrections on those minutes? Hearing none, I will call for a motion to approve.
Chair Chesney?
Commissioner Sivilicik?
To approve the minutes as presented.
What was that, Sarah?
In the motion.
Okay, we got, we got a motion by Commissioner Sivilicik, second by Commissioner Bruce, any discussions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving right along. We're gonna go to item eight, public hearings. The first hearing is tentative subdivision map case number W T M twenty two one dash zero zero five Lupin Street. Secretary Lloyd, could you enlighten us on the details of Lupin Street?
All right, this item before you tonight's for hearing, discussion, and possible actions to approve a tentative subdivision map to allow the division of three contiguous parcels at five eight four zero Lupin Drive and five eight four five and five four five five Pearl Drive, totaling three point eight four acres into eleven lots ranging from twelve thousand four square feet to fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven square feet in size with access to the development of Lupin Street. Representing Washoe County in this matter is planner Julie Olander.
Okay, Julie, just a second, do we have any disclosures by commissioners? Either ethics or ex parte communications on this item? Seeing none, Julie, you have a floor.
Good evening, Julie Olander, for the record with planning a building. I'm gonna share my screen. All right, this is this is for W T P M twenty one zero zero five Lupin Street. The applicant is requesting a tentative subdivision map to develop three parcels totaling three point eight three acres into eleven single-family lots. Here's a map sort of showing where the three parcels are out in Sun Valley, off of Sun Valley Boulevard and so forth. And then here's a layout of the, of the parcels, the eleven lots. It's gonna be on a street off of Lupin. The applicant applicant is proposing to divide the three parcels into eleven lots ranging from twelve thousand twelve thousand and four feet to fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven feet. The overall destiny is gonna be two point eight acres. I mean, two point dwelling units per acre. And as I said, the lots are gonna be off Lupin Drive on a new, new street, Caleb Drive. And the development will meet all Washoe County setback and billing standards. The site is vacant and relatively flat, approximately forty nine hundred cubic yards will be graded to, to develop the lots. And then all the material will be balanced onsite and no, nothing will be imported. And here's another look of, of the site, it's like I say, it's fairly flat. It's been left open for a while, so there's a little bit debris, debris on, on the parcel. The site is located in an area with existing infrastructure and municipal, municipal services that are either in place or can be easily established. The parcels are within the Sun Valley General Improvement District and service area. The development will need to meet all of their regulations and policies. And water and sewer will be provided by the G I D. Like I said, the pros access is off of Lupin and there was some other conversation about having some access off of Pearl, but they've moved it just to Lupin. And because this is of the small size of the development, there wasn't any traffic study that was required. It looks like they're gonna have approximately a hundred and ten average daily trips. The cab and Sun Valley cab did not meet during this month. And so the application was not presented to cab. There were forms sent to the cab members, but I didn't receive any comments. And then notice was sent five hundred feet from the site and to approximately to sixty-two affected property owners. And then the application was sent out to a variety of reviewing agencies as listed here on this slide. I did not receive any recommendations for denial. There are some conditions of approval that are in your exhibit A. And then just to remind you, these are the findings that you need to make for a tentative subdivision map. And staff was able to make the findings and I do offer a possible motion. I know that the applicant is available for questions. I don't believe they have a presentation, but they can answer any questions and I can answer any questions that you might have about the, the application.
Okay, thank you, Julie. I, I will, I will offer the applicant the opportunity to make a presentation. If you don't have one, that's, that's fine, you say we're, we're available to, to answer comments, we'd like to hear that from you, though.
I think, yeah, I am available here to answer any questions that you might have. Do not have any formal presentation.
Okay, great. So are there any questions of staff or the applicant? Any members of the commission? Hearing none. Is there any public comment on this project?
I see no hands raised, so no public comment.
Seeing no public comment, I'm gonna bring it back to the commissions. For any further questions of staff? Hearing none. I'm gonna close the public hearing and call for any discussion. Is there any discussion between the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Sivilicik?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Well, I would certainly like to hear it.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved with the conditions included as exhibit A to this matter, tentative subdivision map case number W T M two one dash zero zero five Lupin and Pearl Streets for Star West Homes, having made all findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code one one zero dot zero six zero eight dot two five.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sivilicik, do we have a second?
Commissioner Doncic, I second.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Sivilicik, a second by Commissioner Doncic. Any discussions on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Sivilicik?
Just to add a comment, I just do applaud county staff and the developer for bringing some more housing into this area and to eradicate the blight. I applaud you all.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion, seeing none? I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the, the issue passes unanimously. Moving right along to A B. Special use permit case number W S U P two one dash zero zero one Rock Springs Solar. Commissioner, Secretary Lloyd, would you like to enlighten us on Rock Springs Solar?
Yes, I would. Item up before you is for a hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve a special use permit for one storage, I'm sorry, for one, the establishment of a one hundred and twenty megawatt photovoltaic generation facility and eighty-four megawatt battery energy storage system, which is an energy production renewable use type. Two, a major grading for six hundred and twenty-seven acres of ground disturbance, including one hundred and forty-three thousand cubic yards of cut, one hundred and forty-three thousand cubic yards of fill for site preparation. And three, request to vary height landscaping and parking by allowing structures up to a maximum of one hundred feet tall from thirty-five feet tall, waiving all landscaping requirements and waiving the paved parking requirement. This project meets the standard for a project of regional significance because it will generate more than five megawatts of electricity, require a regional, I'm sorry, require construction of a substation, and will require a performance reviewed by the Regional Planning Commission. The substation will be located on accessory parcel number zero seven four zero four zero two five. This project also requires an amendment to the regional utility corridor map of the twenty nineteen Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Staff Planner Dan Collin.
Dan, just one second, please. Any disclosures by commissioners regarding ethics or ex parte communications on this particular project? Seeing none, Dan, you have the floor.
All right, I have before you today W S U P twenty one dash zero 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 one for Rock Springs Solar. And here we go. So this is a request to establish a one hundred and twenty-one, or one hundred and twenty megawatt renewable energy use facility. The applicant is requesting a major grading permit for six hundred and twenty-seven acres of ground disturbance and one hundred and forty-three thousand cubic yards of cut and one hundred and forty-three thousand cubic yards of fill. They're also requesting to vary height landscaping and parking standards. This does meet the threshold of a project of regional significance. This project is located approximately forty-five miles north northwest of the city of Reno, right next to our old friend Fish Springs Solar, as it uses the same substation, the Fort Sage Substation. As you can see here, it's outline of the rough layout of the solar facility or the dark area within the outlined area are the proposed locations of photovoltaic cells. As you can see, there's battery storage located in the southeast corner, which is closest to the proposed substation, as well as the Fort Sage Substation by the energy. This is bisected by the existing three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and forty-five kilovolt transmission. As you can see here, this is elevation of the proposed photovoltaic collectors. We can see here, here are some images of what the battery container storage will look like and what the elevations of the proposed control facility will look like, as well as the fence details, which is an eight foot by fence. All right, so now into the analysis, we're gonna start with uses. This is a energy production renewable energy use type. This is permissible within general rural zoning with an approved S U P, which is what we have before you today. All of the affected parcels in this proposed application are general rural. So moving on, Article three oh six, accessory structures, the applicant is currently in the process of terminate, determining the configuration of their battery systems. It may end up being that they are housed in Conex or cargo containers, boxes. So under one ten three oh six, ten G one subsection two, applicant is allowed up to one cargo container per acre. Si area is six hundred and sixty acres, so that gives you a maximum of six hundred and sixty Conex boxes. These are required to be painted a solid unit, unit color by code. Temporary uses. This application, unlike the Fish Springs Solar application, did not specifically outline the temporary contractor's yard. However, if one is established, I've provided conditions of approval within exhibit A recommending it be meet the provisions of Washoe County Code one ten three ten forty-five. Application also mentions a potential for communication of one hundred and fifty feet, which falls under Article three twenty-four Communication Facilities. This is not included in this review. And if this does move forward, it will require, it may require another special use permit in accordance with one ten three twenty-four thirty-five. All right, building placement standards. Applicant is not requesting to vary any setbacks. So all the normal structures on this parcel will need to meet the setbacks of thirty feet front, rear, and side yard and fifty foot side yard setbacks. However, the substation reaches one hundred feet in height and it is not explicitly excluded under the height requirements under Article four oh two. This is a requirement in order to actually make the facility work, therefore, I recommend varying the height in order to allow for the substation any other required electrical equipment to be installed without any argument. Okay, Article four ten, parking. Applicant is requesting to waive all the required parking design standards. Staff recommends waiving some of these, including the parking lot design, wheel stops, striping and marking, paving, landscaping, and lighting requirements. But I, I can't recommend waiving the parking stall sizing or access requirements as those are tied to safety. And therefore, those are not included in the conditions of approval for areas being waived. The proposed site will house, I believe, total of three parking spaces or accommodate employees in central for handicaps. However, there's not enough information to determine loading spaces at this point in time as it's a function of the total building square footage. It's about three thousand square feet per loading space, which is twenty-five by fifteen. We'll get that at the building permit stage. And since there's no requirement for paving, it's gonna just be easy to be mapped out. Article four twelve, landscaping. Applicant is requesting to waive all formal landscaping standards as the area is remote and does not match the character. Staff agrees with this assessment and recommends waiving the formal landscaping requirements. However, if the applicant chooses to install any landscaping, they will be required to maintain. And as you can see here, this is the fence that's gonna be put in, which is gonna be unslatted in order to mitigate noise issues with wind out in the high desert. This has been proposed in prior high desert applications, such as Fish Springs Solars, specifically by the cab, in order to mitigate the sound effect on neighboring property. And here is the general location of the site, which you can see that there's generally a lack of trees or any reason to have formal landscaping out there. Lighting and sounds, the proposed application meets the lighting requirements under four ten, or, or, sorry, one ten four fourteen point twenty-one. And now we move into grading. So the applicant originally requested major grading for six hundred and twenty-seven acres of ground disturbance, along with one hundred and forty-three thousand cubic yards of cut and one hundred and forty-three thousand cubic yards of fill. There are no requests to vary any of the grading standards, so they'll need to meet all the requirements in Article four thirty-eight, which are briefly summarized here in this table. However, they will be required to submit an noxious weed plan for any imported fill if it comes to that, in accordance with High Desert Policy two point two. And it came to staff's attention after this was posted publicly that the applicant would like to revise the request for the cut and fill amounts to four hundred and twenty-six thousand cubic yards of cut and fill. I do not see any issues with this change of requests. A, because the original request already exceeded all the requirements in order for notification to air quality management, as well as N D O, which were already notified and able to provide comments on this, as well as the fact that they're still going to need to come in for drainage and grading plans as part of the conditions of approval. I think this really just mitigates the need to have this come back before the planning commission in the future, as we've seen for Fish Springs Solar, Dodge Flat Solar, the other ones. So I have the, I'm happy to add a condition at the planning commission's request to limit the top end of cut and fill to four hundred and twenty-six thousand cubic yards. So Article five oh five, signs. Applicant is proposing a thirty-two square foot sign at the entry. It's four by eight. This meets the requirements under the sign code for the free standing sign. And I apologize, this was not the correct slide. And this is from last year's application. Notice was sent to property owners within twelve hundred and fifty feet of the site. I can provide a map for you in a minute that accurately outlines the required noticing area. And we'll move on to cab, which is this was originally scheduled to go before the Gerlock Empire Cab on February eleventh. However, it was canceled because this technically isn't in the high, or Gerlock Empire Cab's boundary, despite it being within the High Desert Area Plan, wherein Gerlock Empire has a much better grasp of the High Desert Area Plan because it encompasses the entirety of the rest of the High Desert Area Plan. So it was rescheduled with the consent of the applicant for March eighth, twenty twenty-one, with the North Valleys Cab. However, this was canceled. So out of an abundance of caution, I sent out worksheets to both cabs and received two worksheets back that would provide comments on impacts to wildlife, potential for battery leakage, and road traffic impacts, though specifically for Pyramid Highway, which would not be impacted by this development. Staff is able to make all five of the required findings for a special use permit, as well as the additional three findings for a natural resources use type and therefore recommends the planning commission approve the special use permit with the conditions attached in exhibit A. And I provided a motion for your convenience. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Chair Chesney?
Commissioner Sivilicik?
I do have a couple of questions. The, what we received in our packet, the cover page of this document says it is general rural, area plan, high desert, citizens advisory board, Gerlock Empire. And our agenda also says that. And I don't wanna put county staff on the spot, but I would like to see a boundary map of cabs because I, I cannot see how this is a North Valleys cab item.
To be completely frank, I didn't think so either.
I would like to see the map, please.
I don't believe it is either, Sarah, but whoever made the decision made it. So both cabs had an opportunity, I believe, to to have input, so. Hey?
So this is a question for council then, since the agenda and the cover page to the staff report has High Desert Area Plan and Gerlock Empire C A B noted. Is that an issue?
This is Jen Gustafson for the record. I don't think it's going to be an issue that creates an open meeting law violation. Obviously, we would be better to have the correct cab on there, but that's not something that this board is determining as far as part of the request. So no, I think that the clerical error on this noticing, naming the cab the incorrect cab should not create an open meeting law issue for you.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, so that little blue dot right here is within the North Valleys cab, which is all of this.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can pull up the High Desert Area Plan, which it clearly falls within, which is this big green area.
Okay.
So they overlap, huh, Dan?
Yes, for some unknown reason.
Trevor, I will follow up with you on that as the board secretary. So Dan, if you could go through, explain again for us on the amount of cut and fill?
So my understanding is that the applicant is requesting four hundred and twenty-six thousand cubic yards of cut and fill beyond the original application, which was filed and brought, provided in the staff report and provided to the public ten days before. However, in past practices, we've had to come before this board twice in order to do an amendment of conditions in order to get the correct engineered cut and fill for these projects. I believe we had the Fish Springs Solar coming for you two months ago in order to roughly quadruple the amount of cut and fill in order to meet the drainage requirements in order to make sure runoff doesn't spill off onto neighboring properties.
And Dodge Flat have the same, had the same issue. I think, I think this is the wise application request. And till, till they get into these things, they, they don't, they don't all do it.
And, but for the record, the motion says one hundred and forty-three thousand cubic yards of cut and one hundred and forty-three thousand cubic yards of fill.
That is correct in my staff report, correct. So I would recommend amending the emotion, the motion to four hundred and twenty-six thousand cubic yards and also adding a condition of approval to the staff or to exhibit A in order to limit the amount of cut and fill to that specific amount.
Dan, this is Jen Gustafson for the record. How is this noticed?
I believe this was noticed as one hundred and forty-three thousand cubic yards.
Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned with, with doing that, that you are gonna have an open meeting Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned with, with doing that, that you are going to have an open meeting law issue because that is one of the substantive grading determinations that this board is required to make.
Because it was agendized that way, Jan?
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, the open meeting law requires a clear, a clear and complete statement of all topics to be considered, and the amount of cut and fill is one of the topics that's being considered, and it has been noticed to the public and agendizes one hundred and forty three thousand, which of course, in the past, is why when the grading has increased, we've come back to the planning commission as a matter of course. So that would be my recommendation to the board is to follow past practice, given open meeting law concerns about that.
I appreciate that clarification because I would not be willing to support an increase other than what was stated.
So let's talk about this for a minute. Would Jennifer, would we have the ability if, if the client would like us to postpone action on this to next month and they could revise their application so that it reads for the proper yardage rather than them going to jump through the hoops and go to the expense of coming back through a whole another special use permit process to, 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 to cover their, their grading needs? Is that a possibility if the client would be willing?
Yeah, I think you would need to get agreement with the applicant because, and I think Trevor and Dan can certainly speak more to this. There may be some time limitations that we are pressing up against, and so you would need to have agreement with the applicant. If the applicant would not agree and this board decided not to grant the higher request, then they would need to come back with an amendment of conditions, I believe, rather than a entirely new S U P. It would be an amendment of conditions.
Okay, so Dan.
Would it be possible, and Jen, this is just me thinking, would it be possible to move the rest of the items that are on this agenda forward today as they deal with the project of regional significance and come back with the grading, which is a separate master separate grading permit, which does not need to go to the Board of County Commissioners or Regional, and postpone that for another month? Is that an option?
I think that would be an option if the applicant agreed to do that because, I mean, you could, of course, move forward on the amount of cut and fill that's in the application now. So I would, I would reach out to the applicant through this meeting and, and see if they were, if they would like to do that.
Okay, so, so there we go. I guess the applicant, I imagine the applicant's got a presentation. That would be Joan, I imagine. Yeah, so we have, we have this conundrum here. We're trying to make it as easy on you, the applicant, and so is Dan, but we've agendized this thing for the one hundred and forty three thousand cubic yards. So that creates an open meeting law issue if we change it. We can't, matter of fact, we cannot change it to four hundred and whatever it is yards at this meeting. So I would guess, let's, let's try and talk this out right now. I think that's appropriate, isn't it? What, what the applicant would like, like to do and, and what staff would, would, would be willing to, to, to go with? Or do you want to go ahead and just, you want to go ahead and as written and approve it and then come back later? Yes, Joan.
I would like to do whatever is easiest for the board and us combined. I'm not in a pressing situation in terms of timeframes at this juncture. So if you find that it would be more convenient to postpone it one month, we would be readily glad to do that. As Dan mentioned, our original application was one forty three. And then Dan had mentioned that he had seen these other issues with the other applicants. And so we came back with what we thought was our absolute max, which is the but certainly, given our current construction timeframe, if it would be at the pleasure of the board to, or the commission to delay this, we'd be more than willing to accommodate that. And then I guess the only question that I would has is, would be is if you want me to go through the presentation and all of those wonderful things for you to get to know us better, or if we should just delay that until next month as well.
We would love to hear your presentation, but I think if we bring it back next month, you won't have to do it twice. And, and what, what I'm trying to facilitate here is because we got it, we've got a track record on the, on these solar operations, just a second, Tom. That, once you get into the middle of these things, you are going to come back. There's, there's little question in any of our minds, and so we're trying to make it. I personally would rather see you get it done in one go around than have to come back and jump through the hoops a second time and make it, make it easier on you, the applicant. And, and staff, so I guess with some comment from Secretary Lloyd and maybe Dan. Second, Tom, where, Thomas, just a second, please. So where are you standing? You want to? I got to hear Commissioner Bruce here in just a second.
Right, yeah, I'll just go ahead and weigh in. It would be far less cumbersome to have the applicant bring it back rather than piecemeal it, approve the portion of it now and then later. And, and we're grateful for an applicant that's willing. And we do apologize again, but we're grateful that you're willing to come back next month and we have a clean description, and it makes it easier on you.
Commissioner Bruce.
That, no, no, that basically made my question moot. Secretary Lloyd's comments made my, I agree that, and so I have no comment or question.
Then I, and I, I'm a, this is the first time I've gone through this in seven years, but so I guess we would probably ask for a motion now to postpone this to, for next month's meeting and allow the applicant to change the cubic yards of grading and as to, to what they, they wish the application to be. Is, is that, does that sound appropriate, Jen?
Yes, I would just clarify that the motions say, you know, by, by, between a stipulation between the applicant and the planning and building division, that this be continued to the next meeting.
Okay, Joan, are you good with that?
I'm, I'm good with that, absolutely.
Thomas.
I had a question. It seems to me, and it's hazy, but in the rules, policies and procedures, it seems to me that the chairman can can just continue it or something like that with agreement. And so no motion, it seems to me that no motion is required to continue this or defer it.
Okay, then I will, I'm going to take a stab at this. With the concurrence of the applicant and staff, I would like to continue this meeting to the May meeting of the Washoe County Planning Commission. And because of the gracefulness of the applicant, I would like it to be the first agenda item on the agenda. And we will hear your presentation that, if you're more than welcome to give your presentation now, but if you don't want to give it twice, you can give it to us next month and we'll move on with this. So that is from the chair. Commissioners of Alte.
Thank you. I can support that, but since we are considering the continuance, I would urge planning staff to make a concerted effort to connect with the cab and have a full cab report.
Okay, we have, we have a month to do that. That, that, that's a legitimate concern. So I'm going to continue this, Jen. Chairman.
Chair Chesney, I would just recommend that you actually do vote. I'm looking at, I believe I have the updated policies. It says three point oh four. The commission may vote to grant a continuance on an agendized item. And then since we also are requesting staff to do some additional work as well, I think that that would be appropriate to put that in a motion form.
So we're going to do a motion?
I would recommend that.
Okay. So Commissioners of Alte, do you like to take a stab at that motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that this item be continued based on the agreement of planning staff and the applicant to the May planning commission agenda and then ask staff to clear up any issues regarding notification for cabs and to seek cab feedback.
I will second that.
Second the motion.
Okay, Tom Bruce, second to the motion. Motion by Commissioner Savelcheck, second by Commissioner Bruce. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the continuance passes unanimously, and we'll see y'all next month, first on the agenda.
Okay, thank you for putting us first on the agenda too. That's much appreciated, and we'll see you next month. Take care.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Sure, sure, of course.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna close that agenda item and we're gonna move on to agenda item eight C. Eight C is, hold on. Amendment case number W A B two one dash zero 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 three, Fullner, abandoned.
Mister Chair, before we get started on this, I would ask for staff members to hold on. The two items that follow are the abandonment and a special use permit both by the same applicant. Do we wish to open up these items together or do them separate?
Jen, that would be, I, I would, I would just assume do the
Was there any public comments?
Unless Jen has an objection. Sarah, you don't think so?
I believe they're separate, they're very different and separate items. I think we should handle.
Okay, then we'll take them one at a time.
The first item is abandonment case number W A B twenty one zero 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 three, Fullner. Residents, the, it's for hearing, discussion and possible action to approve an abandonment of a thirty three foot roadway and public utility easement and providing a replacement, seven and a half foot public utility easement along the eastern boundary of assessors parcel number one five zero two five zero four eight, representing Washoe County, the planner, Dan Klonz.
Dan Klonz for the record, yet again, W A B twenty dash zero 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 three for Fullner residents. So the applicant is requesting to abandon a thirty three foot roadway and public utility easement along the eastern boundary of the parcel and providing a replacement seven and a half public utilities. This parcel has a high density rural regulatory. So as you can see here, it's just north of Mount Rose Highway on your way up the hill. And this is the location of the easements, which is on the eastern side of it. It is one of the thirty three foot patent easements that we have all over the place up there. So the basic analysis of this is that propose this easement only serves two parcels. It serves the A P N one five zero two five zero three nine and one five zero two five zero four five. One five zero two five zero three nine is accessible by Mountain Daisy and Seaton Road, whereas one five zero two five zero four five is accessed, accessible through Mountain Ranch Road. Staff appreciates the proposed seven and a half foot of utility access easement as a replacement and has included that as a condition of approval. And as you can see here, this just makes it very clear what is going on. Everything that's in the light blue is existing access. The yellow parcels are the parcels that are actually affected by the easement, and if it goes away, as you can see, parcel three nine is, has two areas to access onto it, whereas parcel four five has access along the southern route. Proposed abandonment is right here. It would make no difference in terms of access. I will note, though, however, parcel forty five is owned by Truckee Meadows Fire District, and they provided no comments on this proposed easement, so there's no issues there. So notice was sent to seven affected property owners adjacent to the abandonment, and that was the wrong map. And this went to the South Truckee Meadows Washoe Valley Cab on March fourth. There were some concerns raised over access to the northerly parcels. This was cleared up after looking at Washoe Regional Act system by Chair member David Stelgrove, and there was noted that there was additional access, and the cab voted unanimously in favor of the abandonment. Therefore, staff is able to make all three of the abandonment findings and recommends that the planning commission approve the requested abandonment. And I have provided a possible motion for your convenience, and I'm available for any questions if you have.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Before we get to Dan's question, I forgot to ask for disclosures by any commissioners. Are there any disclosures by commissioners, either I F X or X Park Communications? Hearing none. Okay, is there any questions for Dan at this time? Hearing none. Does the applicant have a presentation? Or wish to?
Chairman Chesney and planning commission members, my name's Brian Newman. I'm representing the applicants, Megan and Chris Fulner. And we feel that the presentation presented by Dan is more insufficient to explain the complexities of this project. And rather than be redundant and repetitive, we're going to stand with that. We are accepting and amenable to the conditions of approval. And we are also here for any questions to be answered, and I have exhibits as well. So if you need any light shedded on it, we're here for you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Let's see, do we have any, are there any further questions of Dan at this time? Do we have any public comment on this item?
I have an Eric Sheets with his hand up. I'm not quite sure if he is part of the of this project's group or if he is a public comment. His hand's been up the whole time. So I'm guessing that since nobody is saying that he's part of their project, he must be public comment. So I will allow him to speak and put the timer up.
Here we go. I think I just was unmuted. This is Sheets for the record. I thank you all for your time this evening. I am the property owner to the north there, one five zero two five zero three nine. So I would be one of the two affected parcels. With that being said, I'll be honest, at first I was quite concerned. I actually, first off, thank you for sending this notice. I received it last night, actually. I ended up tracking it through priority, seeing how it got here. I went to Arizona, went to San Francisco, and then it came back here, of which I live in Reno. So not sure why it went around the world, but at least I got it. So with that being said, I wasn't sure what it meant. So I went in and looked at the reports that you guys had online. And now I understand it is the easterly side there. And as long as it doesn't affect Mountain Ranch Road, and I'll speak for all my neighbors here. In fact, I've had others call me today. But anyway, because they know I am a civil engineer, I'm very knowledgeable on some of this information, but as long as it doesn't affect Mountain Ranch Road as it exists, which I see that is the plan according to the staff report, then I don't think there'll be any issues. Generally, our neighborhood uses Mountain Ranch Road as the primary access, at least the lower part. Some people now use the Callahan, but it is very important for Some people now use the Callahan, but it is very important for us to maintain this access. So as long as that's not affected, I will support this. In fact, I think some of the thirty three foot easements are excessive. And so I understand that they would ask for this. I do have some similar comments on the grading now that I looked at that on the staff report, but I'll hold that till the next item if you guys so choose. That is all, but otherwise I'm in support of this if, if it is according to the staff report.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for your input. Is there any further public comment? Hearing none.
I see no further public comment. Sorry, that wasn't quick enough.
If, if there's no further public, public comment, last shot at the questions for the for the staff, from the commissioners. Then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Is there any discussion between the commissioners on this item? Hearing none, then I will call for a motion.
Chair Chesney, Commissioner Doncheck.
Commissioner Doncheck.
I move, make a motion. I move that after giving reason considerations, the information contained in the staff reported, information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number W A B twenty one dash zero 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 three for Christopher and Megan Fulner, having made all three findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section one ten dot eight oh six dot twenty and a fourth finding in accordance with the Nevada Revised Statutes two seventy eight dot forty eight parentheses three.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Doncheck. Do we have a second?
Chair Chesney, this is Commissioner Nelson. I'll make a second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Doncheck, the second by Commissioner Nelson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we're gonna go to agenda item eight D. That would be a special use permit case number W S U P two one dash zero 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 four, Fulner grading. Secretary Lloyd, would you like to enlighten us on the prospects of this S P U?
This next item is for hearing, discussion and possible action to approve a special use permit for major grading on a two point four seven acre parcel on ninety thousand square feet, including three thousand cubic yards of cut and fill and grading within a sensitive stream zone. Representing Washoe County, once again, is planner Dan Klonz.
All right, Dan Klonz for the record, yet again. And now I have W S U P twenty one dash zero 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 four, Fulner grading. The location hasn't changed, just the request. The applicant is requesting major grade permit for ninety thousand square feet of ground disturbance and three thousand cubic yards of cut, three thousand cubic yards of fill, as well as grading within a sensitive stream zone. There are some prior unauthorized rockery walls and mass grading on the site. As you can see here, it's the exact same location as the last application. And here's the site plan. So what we have here is a residential development, which involves a main residence, which will be constructed, a shop, a horse paddock and a horse park. And grading is effectively in order to provide for the foundations as well as the pads for all of these structures. As well as putting in a couple of rockery walls, which are outlined in dark black dotted lines. And then this is just roughly rough idea of how the grading effectuates flow. There's some grading along the edge of the parcel in order to drain water away from structures. And then put it along the road into the drainage along the road, as well as draining the water on eastern side through the rockery wall down into the existing drainage alongside the road. This area, which is marked in the red, is the sensitive stream zone, more or less, and that's how it's affected. As you can see here, this is the grading plant. As you can see here, you can see the cuts for the drainage on western side as well as on the eastern side. And right around here is the mountain ranch road. And here are the cross sections. As you can see, they are pretty minor. We're talking about, I think about six feet overall across the entire parcel with the rockery walls stepping down in order to flatten out the parcel. So this does be crossover into a six, a six sensitive stream zone, which requires the approval of a special use permit. This is because there's a drainage ditch driveway that's within that and those count as a drainage facility. In order to mitigate the impacts of that, staff has provided conditions of approval requiring best management practices to minimize spring bed, bank, bed erosion, as well as destruction drainage materials, increasing sedimentation impacts, as well as minimizing pervious surfaces in order to make sure that we're not impacting sensitive stream zone or associated stream. Moving on to article four thirty eight, the applicant is not requesting to vary any standards. They're required to meet all the standards under a four thirty eight. And the application meets the required slopes of retaining wall height as outlined in the chart below. Staff has no comment on that and engineering provided general engineering grading drainage permit requests on in the conditions of approval. Staff was, public notice was sent to thirty seven affected property owners, one thousand feet from the site. This is the accurate map. And the citizen advisory board met on March fourth, twenty twenty one with the South Truckee Meadows, Washoe Valley Cab. Cab did voice concerns over the prior unpermitted rockery walls. However, they were happy that this would be permitting them and getting it under review and voted unanimously in favor. Therefore, staff is able to make all five of the special use permit findings and recommends that the planning commission approve the requested special use permit. And I provide a motion for your convenience. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of Dan from, from the commission? I, I, I did, I did hear you Dan say that, that the concern over the pre-existing rock walls has been addressed. Is that correct?
Yes, my understanding, my understanding of this is that they will be removing some of the the unpermitted rock walls and constructing ones that are better positioned for the construction of their future structures.
Great, thank you. Any, any other questions of Dan from the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to public comments. Is there any public comment on this?
Yes, we have Mr. Sheets again. Let me allow him to talk.
Right, I think I've been unmuted. I again think you see the time. Again, after reviewing the staff reports on this, I personally don't have any issues with the grading request. I will note a few things of, that may be useful for you. First off, the sensitive stream environment there really isn't an issue. Again, as I mentioned before, that Mountain Ranch roadway area is basically, it blocks the actual White's Creek that is to the south. So there really isn't much issue. I know there was some comment on drainage across the driveway there. I've never seen water get up to there. Now, I will say on the backside or the north side of the property, due to the property that is just uphill of me, when they regraded, they built barns and all kinds of stuff. And the drainage came down dramatically after they cleared everything. So the backside of that site could see some erosion issues. So I would highly recommend you continue as staff reports suggest to follow requirements of the county and make sure everything is suitable there. I will also note on the rockery walls, when they built those a few years ago, and it took quite some time for them to, for whoever it was that owned it at that time to do that in their crews. But I don't think anybody in our neighborhood has had issues with, with those walls. I heard the fire department might have had a little something with them, but honestly, they, they look pretty good. And if they pull out some of them and meet the requirements of the county, I think that'll be okay as well. So in general, again, as a neighbor, I support what they're doing as long as they follow staff recommendations.
Thank you for your input. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bringing it back to.
Larry?
Yes.
There is public comment. You're quicker than me. We have Jean, Jean Marsh.
Okay.
Can you, can you, okay.
Thank you. If you can hear me, my name is Jean Marsh. I'm at fifty eight oh one Mount Rose Highway. This is a public comment, not related to the grading, but to the structure itself. It seems as growth occurs in our rural area, the light pollution is getting pretty significant. And all I would ask is that the homeowners realize that there is a tendency towards darkness here and not to light the barn such that it impacts our views of Mount Rose Highway and our vistas. So I appreciate the opportunity to express the concern about light pollution in this area. And that's all.
It is, is there any, I, I, is that the, the end of your public comment?
Yes, sir, it is. Yes.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
We have no further public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close, I'm gonna close the media, the public hearing. Call for any discussion amongst the commissioners. Hearing none. Chair? No.
It looks like Pat has her hand up, Mr. Chair.
All right. I guess I will call for a motion.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Mister Pat Phillips, is there any way to incorporate the concern about the lights in this or is that beyond our scope right now?
And, and that, and, and experience tells us that once, once this building starts going through the permitting process and, you know, our Washoe County has the, the dark skies initiative, mandatory downlining, those issues should be pretty well addressed. And then, you know, if that doesn't cover it, there's always the good neighbor policy. You can go talk to your neighbor about it. But, okay, so I'm gonna call for a motion. Is there a motion?
Chair Chesney.
Commissioner Doncheck.
I want to make a motion.
I'd love to hear it.
I'm sure. I move that after giving reason consideration to the information contained in the staff report, the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve with condition special use permit case number W S P, W S U P twenty one dash zero 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 four for Christopher and Megan Fulner, with the conditions included as exhibit eight to this matter, having made all five findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section one ten dot eight ten dot thirty.
Thank you.
Chair Chesney, I would like to second the motion, please.
Is that you, Larry?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Okay, so we have, we have a motion by Commissioner Doncheck, second by Commissioner Payton. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move back to item nine on the agenda. Chair and commission items. A, discussion and possible action to move future Washoe County Planning Commission meetings from six thirty P M to six P M. Do we have any discussion on this?
I have a question. Is that, is this proposal simply for while we're zooming or is this a permanent suggestion?
I would propose it to be permanent.
I can't support a permanent change at this time. I believe that during the pandemic, it is the wrong time to formally change the planning commission's normal meeting time. I believe we should be pressing assiduously to return to normal. Had this, were this proposed as a temporary change when we zoom, I, I support it. I have learned at U O H K that fixing something that ain't broke at best changes little or nothing and at worst mucks up the works. I believe at the least we should try to find how, why and who arrived at the six thirty time we have heretofore used. Perhaps from our commission secretary's predecessor. I also believe some efforts should be invested in gathering input from the public as to the impact of such a change on their ability to participate. The Spanish Springs C A B meeting at six, but it is about a half hour closer to home than the county planning commission's normal public meeting. I don't know when the other cabs meet. Does this have any rationale in it? Another item is, is that in the rules, policies and procedures, item three point oh one sub D stipulates in order to maximize public participation in a meeting, commission meetings shall not extend beyond eleven P M. Which at least to me begs the question, should we change, should we be considering changing that as well? And will this change of the start time further maximize or potentially reduce public participation? I think more consideration should be given to this item, and I'm not saying that I'm adamantly against it. I just think we need to do, be, we need to tread very, very carefully with maximizing public participation as, and finding out why it is where it is. Generally, there's a reason why things were the way they were. That's my consideration.
Thank you. Is there any other input from any of the other commissioners?
Chair Chesney.
Yes.
I would support moving the time. My reasoning for that is the three of us that sit on regional planning commission, those meetings start at six. The community members have expressed to me the confusion in the meeting times with one being six thirty, one being six P M. And it is challenging. And what I've also heard that earlier meetings, people are less likely to go home. They'll stay for the meeting, but if it's a later meeting, then they'll, they don't participate because they want to get home. So I would support an earlier time.
Chair Chesney, any other comments from any of the other commissioners?
Chair Chesney, I would also support the move to move to six P M. And in order to possibly facilitate this, maybe we just call for a roll call vote.
We could do that. Is, is, let's make sure everybody gets a chance for input here. So I'm, I, I'm going, I'm gonna, I'm gonna weigh in. I agree with Commissioner Savilec that, that other meetings start at six o'clock. Six thirty is for, if, if the public is really interested, they're gonna make it at six. If they can't make it, they can, they can also send an email. They can give comment by phone. Once we go back to face-to-face meetings, they can still give comment that way. I don't know if we're gonna continue Zoom after we go back to face-to-face menus or meetings. But the, the six thirty start time is just, whether it be during daylight savings time or not, is an odd hour. And we put the eleven o'clock cap on these meetings because we've had meetings that have run into the early morning. And we all have. And we all have other things to do with our lives in the real world the next day, and late meetings are not healthy. And for us, we're putting in, most people putting in a full day at their job, and then hanging out at the meeting till twelve, twelve thirty at night. So that, that's on the, on the inside of the, the meeting. So that's my input. If anybody else has input, welcome to hear it right now. Otherwise, I would like to call for a, a motion and a vote, and we'll do a roll call vote on this. That would be just fine. Does somebody want to take a stab at a motion?
Chair Chesney.
Yes, Commissioner Savileczeck.
I move that the Washoe County Planning Commission meeting start time moved to six P M.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Nelson will second.
Okay, thank you. The motion by Commissioner Savileczeck and second by Commissioner Nelson. We'll do a roll call vote. Donna, would you do us the honor of?
Sure, I can do that. Larry Chesney.
Aye.
Francine Doncheck.
Aye.
Thomas Bruce.
Aye.
Sarah Savileczeck.
Aye.
Kate Nelson.
Aye.
Larry Peyton.
Aye.
Phil Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, we have, was, Thomas, was yours a, a nay?
Yes, it was a nay.
Okay, so the motion passes with one no vote. Okay, so the planning commission meetings will start from, starting as of next month. Will start at six P M. Thank you, and let's see. Do we have any future agenda items? Anybody have a request? Hearing none. Do we have any requests for information from staff?
Chair Chesney, Commissioner Doncheck. I have, it may be an odd request, but Trevor, I received a phone call from a business person. I'm not even sure who they are. They didn't tell the business. They wanted it. But they let me know that a lot of the feeling out there in the business community is if they take their projects through Sparks or Reno, they can get things done a lot faster. And they're very concerned why it takes so long for somebody to get any kind of permits to Washoe County versus the other two. So I just thought I'd put that out there.
So maybe, are, are you, do you want to make out a future agenda item?
I don't know. This is a request for information, because I don't really look at the processes of how Sparks does it, or the process of how Reno does it. But I was approached, and I said I would bring the question up, because it's not the first time I've heard that Washoe County tends to take a lot longer to do things than the other two entities. So I was curious.
Commissioner Doncheck, can you please clarify which specifically, which process?
Permitting process. They're trying to get permits to, to, to build, to do things. It takes longer in Washoe County than the other two. And I wanted to say because of due diligence, but I don't have that, you know, the facts.
Okay, we, I will certainly look into this and report back to the planning commission in terms of.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
That was a good one. Francine. Okay, do we have any more requests for information from staff? Hearing none. Do we have any, under direct, item ten, directors of legal counsel items, do we have a report on previous planning commission items?
Yes, we do. March twenty-third, county commission meeting, the county commission adopted the, the short-term rental ordinances. And what that means is that your planning staff is going to be very busy over the next several months in terms of the implementation, which will start. We will begin accepting applications for short-term rentals, starting May first, and allow for a three-month grace period where enforcement then will begin August first. So we have a lot of work to do to set up the permitting process between now and then, but again, this is two and a half year process. It finally, basically, got, finally got adopted. And I know many of you were, were involved with that process. We thank you.
Hey, Trevor, I, I, just a question on that. There, was there some discussion at one time that the county may contract out the permitting process and the enforcement process for, for that? The short-term rentals?
Right. I believe there has been discussion in that regard. But we have contracted out with a group called Post Compliance that helps with the enforcement and permitting. However, all permitting will be done in-house by county staff.
Oh, okay. Great. Do we have any legal information or case from?
Mr. Chair, another item to report. On March ninth, affirmed the planning, the planning commission decision to approve the Woodland Village, that's the town center subdivision map that came before you all. So that, that happened on March ninth. And finally, she was not here tonight. I just wanted to, to let you all know that Katie Stark, this was supposed to be her last meeting with you all. However, she had a COVID shot and was not feeling good after the shot, so she couldn't make this meeting. We're excited about this, as she will become our newest planner on staff, and so you will see her just in a different role.
Well, okay, Trevor, Commissioner Peyton brought up a, a good point. Is there a, a chance that we can have access to the final approved short-term rental ordinance?
Yeah, absolutely. I can send that to you all. I don't know if you want all of it. There's several sections of code, several chapters of code that were amended. I don't know if you want to see all of those, or simply chapter one ten, which is the development. Let, let me know, and I can send all of, all of you those adopted.
Okay, and last but not least.
I'm sorry, one last thing. They will be available after a twenty-five day appeal process. They'll be available on our website.
Okay, great. Council Gustafson, do you have anything to enlighten us with?
Um, no, no legal items or information for you today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any final public comment?
We have, oh, yes, we do. Eric Sheets.
I'm so sorry. I, I wanted to mention this earlier when Ms. Marsh had talked about the lighting, but I do concur with her on that, and maybe there's a way, this actually breaks out into another thing. It might be worth it to be able to have some of the chat function or something. I know that creates issues and understand. But anyway, this comment comes in way late. But we do have a neighbor that just constantly keeps their lights on, on the barn, and, and they did all the stuff that seems like it shouldn't be there, and everybody talks to them, and it still just happens. So I would concur with what she said, and maybe there's a way to make that comment available on, on this forum. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you. Just a matter of comment. The county does have a code enforcement organization that you're, the public is free to access and, and gives you an opportunity to deal with any code violations that there may be. Okay, so that, is there any, any further public comment? I'm sorry.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, hearing none. Call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. We're adjourned. We'll see you all next week.
Take care, everybody.
And
Thank you.
Be good, enjoy the sunshine. I hope you all get your vaccination so you can feel free again. And I certainly had mine, and I'm telling you.